Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act as currently in effect, under State Emergency Services Act, the Governor's Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19, and the Governor's Executive Order N-2920 issued on March 17th, 2020, that allows attendance by members of the City Council, city staff, and the public to participate and conduct the meeting by video conference. Video conference locations are not open to the public. As some of the attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everybody and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment during the meeting this evening, which is mostly ceremonial. Public comments will be taken on the consent calendar item, and a second opportunity for public comment will occur during public communications. This evening's public comments during public communications will include both items not on the agenda and Agenda Items 4 and 5. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please provide your comments at the appropriate time. When I open the public comment period, use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only, which will alert the staff that you have a public comment that you would like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raised hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. Please wait your turn, and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. As the council is conducting these meetings via video conference, and given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings, and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes for each agenda item that the speaker desires to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will be cut off automatically at the end of two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted have been and will be posted to the city's website for public review and are included with the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live public comment, join the Zoom video conferencing meeting. The ID is 948-31261150. Again, 948-31261150. And you'll need a password, and that password is 991960. Should you choose not to provide comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways. You can watch it on the city's YouTube channel, City of Walnut Creek YouTube channel, cable broadcast Channel 28 in unincorporated Walnut Creek, oh, excuse me, incorporated Walnut Creek only, Rossmore Channel 26, WAVE Channel 29, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. And as always, you can watch the live stream on the city's website. At this moment and at this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Francois?
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Councilmember Waddell?
Here.
Mayor Proton Wilk?
Here.
And Mayor Haskew?
Here. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item? We see none. Does any public member of the public wish to comment on an item on the consent calendar? If you do, please use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're audio and you would like to provide a public comment. For those who desire to provide a public comment on the consent calendar item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been and will be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. At this time, I will ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
Mayor, it does appear we have members of the public wanting to comment. We'll go ahead and let them in one by one.
Thank you very much.
Charles Krilling?
Sorry, I was muted. Good evening, and I just wanted to thank Justin Waddell for his service to the city and the citizens. I want to congratulate Luella Haskew and Kevin Wilk, and also congratulate Cindy Darling, even though she's not on the Zoom yet. And I just look forward to working with all of you, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, point of order, would you mind reminding people what this portion of public comment is about? That it's only in reference-
Actually, I did, but we changed the rules a little bit and said they can talk about any item.
Yeah, so, Madam Mayor, if I may, for this item, they are speaking just to the consent calendar items. It's the next item where they can talk about the others under public.
Okay.
So, the consent calendar items are the verification or certification of the election results and the adoption memo related to what we've done on the ADUs.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, is there any more public comment now that we've had that discussion?
No more public comment.
All righty, then I bring it back to council, and I'd like to have a motion, if I may.
Motion to approve the consent calendar items 2A and 2B.
Okay.
Okay, we have a first and a second, maybe we have a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
Second.
Kevin. Kevin, thank you. Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Waddell?
Or, I mean, I, excuse me.
Mayor Haskew?
Aye.
Question carries unanimously.
Okay, now we're in real public communications. This portion of the meeting is generally reserved for the comment on items not included in the agenda. For this ceremonial meeting, public comment on all remaining items on the agenda will occur at this time. I'm going to repeat that because it's a little different. For this ceremonial meeting, public comment on all the remaining items on the agenda will occur at this time. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on these items raised during the public communications, but they may respond briefly to statements or questions posted, request clarification, or review the item to staff. Does anybody want to make a public comment?
We have Hadil.
Okay, and at this moment, may I ask everyone, hi, welcome, Hadil. And may I ask everyone who wants to make a public comment to raise their hand now so that we can efficiently administer the public comment? Thank you very much. Hadil, would you please start?
Yes, of course. So, good evening, everyone councilmembers. My name is Hadil, and I am the Chair of the Youth Leadership Commission. On behalf of the commission, I would like to congratulate the council on this election. Since becoming more engaged in local government, I've discovered the great significance of local elections as they directly impact the structure of our community. I want to end by thanking you for your support of the commission over the past three years. We are very excited to work with you all on this term. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Escutia?
Good evening, Walnut Creek City Council. I'm here this evening on behalf of Senator Glazer. I wanted to thank Councilmember Waddell for his eight years of service to the city of Walnut Creek and the community of Walnut Creek. I know that the senator was at your last meeting and expressed his thanks. We wanted to make sure that we were here on the record in your last meeting to thank you for your years of service. I also wanted to thank Mayor Haskew for her year as mayor. It was one year, right? Sometimes it all blurs for me. But we want to thank you for your one year of service, and I really look forward to working with the new city council members and getting to know them. Our office will be reaching out. Councilmember Waddell, we did present a certificate of appreciation and thanks. It was left at the Walnut Creek City Hall. I would have liked to have been able to present it in person, but, you know, COVID and all. So, thank you for your time, and thank you, everyone, for giving me this opportunity to speak on the items.
Thank you, George. It was good to see you.
Moxie Marsh?
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Perfect. So, just for record, I'm Moxie. I live in Walnut Creek. So, let's talk about public safety and how the city council has denied it to us. Last meeting, a citizen named Olga openly said she would kill protesters if they were protesting while she was driving. The city council failed to respond to this, which I understand would have been a violation of the Brown Act. I'll also point out that we did have time for Kevin Wilk to go on a three-minute rant about how the city clearly doesn't want to defund the police because the city council race was not even close when Curtis Reese, who was in support of reallocating police funding, almost won the third seat, and the one candidate who was endorsed by the police was the only incumbent who lost reelection. But back to the point, weeks prior to this meeting, the same woman commented the same comment on a post on Facebook made by the Walnut Creek Police Department. This comment also received no response except from citizens who agreed with her threats. You'll only bring up threats being caused for arrests when you want to arrest protesters, but threats meant nothing to you when protesters got death threats in front of City Hall in July. This city is rich in hypocrisy and double standards because the city council and police department don't care about the safety of the public. They care about the safety of property and the safety of the status quo. You say you want to protect our rights, but it's not protecting us when you shoot us. It's not protecting us when you allow people to clearly and publicly threaten to kill us without denouncing their intentions. It's not protecting us or our rights. This city council wants to ignore the blood that stains their hands from the ongoing complicity with violent attacks on protesters. You ask protesters for peace when there's nothing peaceful about the police shooting us, about people hitting us with their cars and threatening to kill us for simply existing and standing up for the marginalized. You're ashamed on this city. You make a mockery of justice and everything that law and order, as you say, should stand for. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Amber?
I know.
Can I be heard?
Yes, you can, Amber.
Oh, hi. My name is Amber. I may begin. Okay. My name is Amber. I'm a five-year resident of Lafayette. I'm requesting transparency in how the funds budgeted for the listening sessions, implicit bias training, and 24/7 non-police response pilot are spent. And I remind those in this council of your campaign promises to support those in mental health crises and to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think we can all agree by taking a look at this council room today that diversity already lacks from within, and you can definitely acknowledge that. For officers tuning in tonight, my most recent experience with the Walnut Creek Police Department, when my rights were violated practicing my freedom of speech as a single protester, were nothing less than dismissive and patronizing. Your officers contradicted themselves. They mocked me in resolving my issue. One officer said I could press charges, and then he said I couldn't. One officer laughed at me. "Mr. Hill, this is your reputation, and you could work on the toxic cultures you're practicing and you subject others to." My main reason to participate this evening is in response to the narrative that was offered in your last council session, sorry. A caller from Maraga commented about the rights for all practicing their freedoms without threat, but she failed to mention that she multiple times assaulted minors on a bridge with her American flag on video, or the fact that the week prior, her friend aggressively attacked underage BIPOC member for the week prior. So, as a community member, I do not have to have children to be outraged that this is such a threat to our community and youth, and it exists in our local community. And this is a teacher in the Hercules School District. So, this is just a warning. Your kids are being taught by these people. Thank you. Also, a reminder that it has been, what, how many days has it been? 500, and somebody chime in for me here. 500.
Thank you.
Catherine Wally?
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Catherine.
Wonderful, thank you. Good evening. My name is Catherine Wally, and I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. My pronouns are she/her. In the wake of the recent election and uprisings for racial justice, some in our community have suggested that they want Walnut Creek to go back to what it has been, while others are concerned about how protests are impacting children and their sense of safety. As a parent, I would like to share my concerns, not only for my child, but for all of our children. I worry he will grow up in a community that is more angered at bearing witness to people demanding change in the face of systemic racism than they are about systemic racism itself. I worry that our children will grow up in a society where every budgetary line item is always a candidate for the chopping block, except for those of the criminal justice system, which can only be increased. I worry that I will not have adequately prepared him to understand the disproportionate risks posed to his black and brown friends by law enforcement, and that because of this failure, he will inadvertently put their safety and futures at risk. I am concerned he will be raised in the same educational system which taught his elected leader that the white women's suffrage movement encouraged more people of color to get involved in the issue as well, when in reality, black women had been pioneers in the suffrage movement for generations, despite the anti-black racism suffused in the white suffrage movement. I worry that his elected leaders will not live up to their campaign promises to support diversity, equity, and inclusion because the majority who elected them find comfort in the status quo. I'm concerned he will grow up in a community where adults will want to return to the normal that got us to where we are, rather than asking themselves what they can do differently to dismantle unjust systems. Here's what I'm not afraid of. I am not afraid that my child will have a meal interrupted by protesters' words that are offensive to some and critical of systems of power. I view these as rich opportunities to challenge our worldview as individuals and as a community. I've brought my child to rallies and protests throughout our county so that we can learn from the experiences of others while internalizing the importance of critical dissent and our responsibility as agents of transformative change in the pursuit of equity. Thank you to all of those who have served and ran for city council on a platform of change and action.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dan H.
May I be heard?
Yes, you may.
I'm a Walnut Creek resident. Tomorrow is a sad day. Tomorrow marks the 18th month anniversary of the most tragic day in Walnut Creek's history as a city. Eighteen months have passed since the son of Walnut Creek, Miles Hall, was murdered by the Walnut Creek Police Department. There has been no justice for his murder. I will now call for a moment of silence so we, as a community, can reflect on the fact that there has been no justice for the murder of Miles Hall. Eighteen seconds for eighteen months of no justice for the murder of Miles Hall, starting now. I request transparency in how the funds budgeted for the listening sessions, implicit bias training, and the 24/7 non-police response pilot are spent. I want to remind the city, the council members, of their campaign promises to support those in need in mental health crisis and to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. Every Walnut Creek citizen should go to justiceformileshall.org. JusticeforMilesHall.org is the website. So, if you go there, you'll find out the truth about Miles Hall, exactly what happened on that day on June 2nd, 2019, eighteen months ago, in broad daylight on video camera. Please, I urge all the Walnut Creek citizens to go to justiceformileshall.org tonight or tomorrow at your convenience, please. That's it for tonight. Thank you very much. JusticeforMilesHall.org, always film the police.
Here, Dan.
Lucas Carboni?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I am here to speak in support of Justice for Miles Hall and all according actions. Firstly, I would like to call for transparency as regards to listening sessions, implicit bias training, and perhaps most importantly, the pilot program for the 24/7 mental health crisis response to ensure that any tragedy equivalent to that of Miles Hall never occurs again. To quote Ida B. Wells, "The way to right wrongs is to shine the light of truth on them." And while I do not necessarily assert that any wrongs occurred here, I do believe that a full transparency and truth is of the utmost importance in such a matter of moral urgency as this one. Secondly, I would like to thank the campaign of Curtis Reese and all other candidates for the Walnut Creek City Council, who called for justice for Miles Hall, making that their essential priority. I understand that all three councilmembers who were elected on November 3rd have pledged to fight for a 24/7 mental health crisis response, a goal that I wholeheartedly share. However, I fear that these promises will ring hollow without staunch public pressure to ensure that these policy actions are in fact taken and justice for Miles Hall is reached. Accordingly, I am here to put that pressure on the council and to maintain my belief and my recognition that this is a matter of urgent moral importance for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas. This is a reminder that if you intend to speak in public comment at this time, please raise your hand so that we know that you wish to. When I close public comment, that means the chance to give a talk for two minutes is gone. Thank you.
Next, we have call-in user one.
Hello, my name is Amy, and I am a community member here in Walnut Creek. As we are approaching a new year with all of the returning city council members and leaders, we must acknowledge that Walnut Creek has elected another all-white board of staff. Zero community members of color represent Walnut Creek currently and will next year. And just this summer, even members of our current council had no idea that racism in Walnut Creek even existed, even though a huge portion of our community can blatantly see it and does acknowledge its presence every single day. I want to remind each and every person on the council that has been reelected that anti-racism was not a summer trend. Anti-racism needs to be a consistent lifestyle within all of us white people in order to unlearn the pieces of the oppressor that is deeply ingrained in each and every single one of us. Just because you cannot see racism in your experience every single day does not mean that racism doesn't exist here comfortably every single day. Racism resides right next door to every single one of our homes here. So, being actively anti-racist is absolutely 1,000% necessary to make a real difference within our community's safety. Looking back during the summer when our city council members had been talking about how our police department was not racist, even though our department was entirely built off of the runaway slave patrols, as seen in hundreds of books, articles, and even the law enforcement museum, it's a fact that police departments in America were built off of runaway slave patrols. 2020's law enforcement strictly exists to continuously keep marginalized people in jail and in debt.
Thank you, Amy.
Lydia Jung?
Hi, may I be heard?
Yes, you may.
Hello, my name is Lydia Jung. I am here today also out of concern for multiple issues regarding the city's response to calls for police reform and developing a non-police crisis response program for mental health emergencies in light of the death of Miles Hall. Firstly, I continue to urge the city council to provide specifics and transparency as to how funds budgeted for listening sessions, implicit bias training, and the non-police mental health response program have been spent or will be spent. I would also like to remind the city council about their promises to support equity and inclusion and provide increased support for mental health emergencies through a 24/7 non-police crisis response program. I also want to echo statements from last meeting that the public should be aware of this program once it does begin as an alternative to police that they should call instead, ideally through signs in public places and other kinds of public service announcements. I would also like to note that ideally reforms of the police department, including divesting from police to some extent to fund programs like a 24/7 mental health response program, will actually, I believe, in at least an ideal situation, will actually help police officers and the integrity of law enforcement by taking the burden of mental wellness calls off of unprepared officers and into the hands of mental health experts. I would also like to echo statements from last meeting and previous meetings that the officers who assault or insult protesters, lie on police reports, and otherwise fail to uphold public safety should be fired, and this also ultimately supports the integrity of law enforcement. But I would also like to emphasize that systemic racism means that individual cops may be good people, but the manner in which they are trained to enforce laws often favors the interests of property people over those who are marginalized, which due to just the way America is, tends to mean that the interests of white people are favored over the interests of people of color. And so, we must also look into reforms of the police department itself, such as civilian oversight and the adoption of "eight can't wait" and other policies. Thank you.
You, Lydia?
David Rengel?
Okay, where am I? Oh, there I am. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? No?
Yes, we can hear you. You're muted now.
All right, now you can hear me. Thank you. You can hear me, right? Yes, all right, thank you. Hello, council. My name is David Rengel. I'm a Walnut Creek resident and a retired Walnut Creek PD sergeant. And apparently, I'm also kind of clueless when it comes to Zoom. A definition for diversity is the inclusion of different types of people, such as persons of different races or cultures in a group or organization. A white person has once again become the PD's latest promotion to lieutenant. She was not the most senior sergeant candidate, nor had the most formal education. She was not the most senior sergeant candidate, nor had the most formal education or supervisory experience. The senior in-house candidate sergeant, who is close to finishing up his master's degree and has vast more supervisory experience, is a Korean-American. A Korean-American who has applied for the position before. This was the white person's first attempt. So, council, another white person is promoted to lieutenant by a white male police chief, just like years prior and prior. So why? Why is it that minority personnel cannot seem to break the threshold from sergeant to lieutenant at Walnut Creek PD? It's not education, it's not supervisory experience, and it's not tenure. So why, council, why do minority personnel continue to get bypassed? Could it be that you, council members and city manager, continue to enable a good old boys' network mentality at the PD? Could it be institutionalized racism? Or could it be a pattern of harassment on minority supervisors by members of the PD's administration, including the now interim chief of police Jay Hill and interim captain Tom Cashin? These are tough questions, and I hope you seriously give them some thought. It's been years and years, and just like the other callers have stated, all white command staff. Thank you for your time.
Ton Hall.
Hello, city council members. Thank you for the time today. I did want to just say a few things about the work that you guys are doing, I guess, with the other city councils. I appreciate that. I'm hoping that there's momentum and that the other cities are interested and on board and also looking at using funds to help with this Miles Hall pilot program. I also would like to acknowledge the fact that all eight city council people who ran, ran for change in Walnut Creek for Miles, not just for Miles, right, because Miles is unfortunately, it's been a month and a half now that he was, he was shot in our neighborhood. And so, yeah, so it looks like, you know, the listening sessions are happening and and it seems like they're a success, but I really hope you guys are listening to what the, what are, what your members and your city, what your Walnut Creek residents are wanting. And obviously, it has to do with change. And Kevin, I know you mentioned something about, you know, the people have spoken, but people have spoken. And it's, and it's really showing that we, the people here are wanting change. We want to make sure our people are safe. I also want to say thanks, thanks to the people that did run, Curtis and Michael and Lauren and Haley. Thank you guys so much. You know, that passion and for change is so important and so needed. And it's also to show the city council that there is a lot of power that our group has. And I hope, I really look forward to working with Kevin, Luella, and now Cindy, and Matt and Cindy, so we can really make some powerful change. And also, I do want to make sure that the city manager, Dan, knows that, you know, we are looking to work with you too. So thank you guys so much. Have a good day.
Mara Flynn-Rothman.
Hello there. Got on quicker this time. So first of all, I just wanted to also address what happened at the last meeting. It really did disturb me, Mr. Wilk, the comments that these, the citizens of Walnut Creek were speaking loud and clear on the, the way they voted. I, I looked at the results and I saw 32% of people, or 32% of the votes went to those four candidates that had bravery to, to run. Many of them, or all of them, were political newcomers, and I think that spoke volumes that the people of Walnut Creek, or 32% of Walnut Creek, wants some change. And so, and as Cindy, I want to applaud the fact that you did speak about 21st century policing. And that was very encouraging to hear that, that, you know, that was something that you were reviewing. But, you know, again, we have a lot of people in Walnut Creek that really want some change, and I just want to make sure that that does not go unnoticed. The election results were loud and clear. Thank you.
Gigi Crowder.
Okay, I've been spending a lot of time doing volunteer work for a city I don't live in, Walnut Creek, because, as I said, when I first showed up to the first city council meeting, I think that Walnut Creek could lead the effort around us putting in place what we need in response to the killing of Miles Hall, a non-police response program. So because of your city manager, we participated two weeks ago, at the same time as the listening session, so it was the busiest period of my big work career, participating in the county's value stream mapping project that will lift up the non-police response that we'd like for the city of Walnut Creek to join other cities. Every other city that I asked, would you be willing to call it the Miles Hall Non-Police Response Project, they all said yes. So I'm hoping that when we build this, this new approach, this reimagined approach to addressing those who are in mental health crisis, that Walnut Creek will join in with other cities with honoring the name of Miles Halls by having it be named after. I'm looking forward to the, the regional approach that you guys all had in place when we came and met with Dan and the outgoing police chief and working with the cities. We know that there's $100,000 set aside for planning, I'm gonna assume, because we're, we only have another six months to go. So having been a former county employee, I know that you can look up and the money will still be sitting there. So I have some ideas from NAMI how we can partner together to advance the work. And as I said, people will be saying that, hey, over in California, they have a non-police response that was birthed out of Walnut Creek, and that's something to be proud of. That's nothing, nothing to fear. That's something to say, out of pain came purpose, out of a tragedy came triumph for those who live with mental illness. So I am still here. I'm still willing to volunteer in any way I can to make sure that in this county, Walnut Creek leads the effort and making sure that individuals are not frightened.
Curtis Reese.
Good evening. My name is Curtis Reese, and first of all, I think congratulations are in order. I really would like to congratulate the candidates that won another opportunity to represent this fine city. I am, as an active member of the recent campaign, I understand the challenges and what it takes to get to this point, at least. So I commend you on this. You should be proud of yourself. This is a momentous moment in, in, in some of your lives. And actually, I want to take a moment. I had an opportunity to speak to virtually everyone on the council, all the candidates except for Mayor Haskew. I, I feel as if I'm remiss in not having that opportunity, but we never organically had that chance. So at some point, I'd like to touch base with you. But that said, you should be proud of yourself and you should find some joy in this moment. But also, after speaking with the community and understanding the needs and desires of the various corners of this city, you have your work cut out for you. So as you proudly stand there and take your oath, I, I hope that you have that pit in the, in your gut and that thought in the back of your mind that there is a significant amount of work to do. And I think it's clear that the city will hold you accountable. And I, as I said before, my goal was to accomplish some of the things that I hope to accomplish after becoming a member of the city council, but that's still possible as a member of the community. And I plan to be an active participant, and I'm available to assist, and I will be reaching out to you to assist me in making the city a better place. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Next, we have Karen Mitchoff, Supervisor Karen Mitchoff and Candace Anderson.
It came up and said unmute, so I guess I'll start over real quickly. Good evening and hello to everyone. I'm here tonight to give greetings and congratulations to those who were reelected to the Walnut Creek City Council, Kevin Wilk and Luella Haskew. I also want to congratulate Cindy Darling on her election. I want to thank council member Justin Waddell for his public service for these last eight years, not only to the citizens of Walnut Creek, but to the county as a whole. I look forward to working with each of you on the various issues that are presented both to the city of Walnut Creek and to the county. And again, have a good evening and happy holidays to everyone. Thank you. Candace, you're on mute.
I muted myself once, but here I am. So again, and Justin, Karen, and I did create a proclamation for you, which has been delivered to city hall. Again, thanking you for your eight years of service. Being on a city council is sometimes feels like a thankless job, but I know as we reflect back on our careers on a city council, there are many, many lives we touch, many lives we improve. So thank you, Justin, for your service. And like Karen, I've got to congratulate Kevin, Luella, as well as Cindy on their election and reelections to positions. And I also want to thank Luella as the outgoing mayor. This has been a rough year for everyone who has served in local office. COVID has turned our lives upside down, and certainly with in Walnut Creek where there's been much protest and joining in on issues that are very, very important to the community. I want to thank you, Luella, for taking the leadership role of coming to the county, coming to the mayor's conference, and saying we need to do something to improve our police response in a crisis. And through the strong leadership of Walnut Creek, partnering with, with Karen and myself and other members of the community, we are doing some really great, great things in redesigning, reimagining, an overused term these days, but how we respond in a mental health crisis. And so I want to thank you for ensuring that that very important work moves forward as well, that will benefit every single community in Contra Costa County. And like Karen, I look forward to working with all of you. You have a great city, a great city council that is going to serve the community very, very well.
Thank you very much, Candace and Karen, and you disappeared. Does anybody want to say anything to either of the supervisors? And here I am. Stick around. Okay, Matt.
Yeah, I wanted to thank both of them for being here tonight and for the ongoing partnership and commitment to Walnut Creek and to the issues that you talked about, Supervisor Anderson. I, I've had the pleasure of getting to know you and Supervisor Mitchoff over the last two years, and I'm just blown away with the level of commitment you have to not all your constituents, but especially your Walnut Creek ones. And I, I want to know, we thank you and appreciate you for that.
Well, thank you very much. It's, it's our pleasure to serve. You're a great community, and you have so many wonderful residents that are making a difference throughout the county. Thank you.
Mayor Tim.
Thank you. And Candace and Karen, thank you again. I won't reiterate everything that Matt said, that your consistent involvement, always happy to take my call, at least it sounds like you're happy to take my call. I hope you won't. And
Always, always.
And discuss the issues, and I have a feeling that there are a couple of issues you might have heard about one or two tonight that we'll be talking about a lot over the next year, and I appreciate your commitment to that as well. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for staying for a little bit longer. Appreciate it.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public comment is officially closed, and I thank everybody for stepping up when they were asked to, and I appreciate the cooperation. The next item on the agenda is sadly Justin's farewell, so.
Mayor, if I could briefly.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, of course.
We have Chief Hill, who is on, who would like to say something briefly.
Yes, hi. Thank you for allowing me the quick opportunity to talk, mayor and council members. I just want to make sure that I have the opportunity to set the record straight and address the comment that was just made by former Sergeant David Rangel, who asked the question of why can't a minority person break through from sergeant to lieutenant at Walnut Creek PD? And he specifically mentioned a Korean candidate. And I would like to point out that one of our current lieutenants is a Korean male, and that three of our eight members of our command staff, which is comprised of lieutenants on up, are female. So that's all I wanted to say. I just want to make sure that, that I didn't let that go without a comment, that we do in fact have a Korean male on our command staff, and three eights of the command staff are female. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jay. Okay. Now, council member Waddell, do you have some comments you'd like to share with us?
Sure, thank you, mayor. Let me start off by congratulating those who won this election for your commitment to serve this wonderful community and the people of Walnut Creek. And let me also thank those who put in the time and effort to run for office this year. While you're not successful, I hope that each of you continue your efforts to advocate for your positions. Running for office and putting yourself in the limelight is clearly not always easy. It was never meant to be. But in the end, we're all better served for respectfully presenting our differing viewpoints than by casting aspersions or remaining silent. I also want to take a minute to thank all of those who have supported me during my two terms in office and the four times I ran. Your support and encouragement means more to me than you'll ever know. But there are a few people I'd like to mention my name. First, my high school sweetheart and wife, Melissa. Thank you for your support and encouragement, and yes, of course, for picking up the slack and supporting my efforts to give back to the community that has provided so much for our family. My children, Sophie and Ava. While always understanding, they have for far too many years seen their father taken away from the family to volunteer to make Walnut Creek an even better community for us and the rest of the community. I look forward to spending more time with the three of you and turning the page to the next chapter of our lives. I also want to thank two of the greatest community advocates Walnut Creek has been lucky to have. Without the two of them, not only would I have not stepped forward to run for office, but Walnut Creek and the surrounding areas would not be the place that I love to call home. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to Paula and Hardy Miller. Your dedication to this community has made a huge impact on me and the rest of the community. Lastly, I want to thank the people of Walnut Creek for allowing me to have the privilege of serving you for the last eight years. It has truly been an honor to represent each and every one of you. I first ran for office in 2010 on a simple but principled platform, establishing prudent financial management to treat every tax dollar I do my own with respect for its scarcity and realizing the need to maximize the value of every dollar. While not successful in 2010, I doubled my efforts, and with the support of the community, I was elected in 2012. To show my dedication to this financial effort, I served all eight years without any compensation, saving the city of Walnut Creek and the taxpayers over $120,000. While not always successful in achieving my primary financial goal, my focus never wavered, and I saw great strides in my objectives. I prevented an unnecessary tax measure, solved implementation of the city's first long-term financial plan, and after almost a decade of advocacy, saw the first implementation of zero-based budgeting, something that some people said were impossible to implement here in Walnut Creek. My first two terms in office were, or my two terms in office were not without trials and tribulations. My first two terms in office were not without trials and tribulations. Yet, I let what was ethical and what was right be my guidepost rather than political winds or the will of a ruling class. Whether it's being the leading advocate for the greatest level of transparency in all activities of government, even when confronted by council opposition, or supporting our men and women in blue, there was never a doubt in my mind what the right actions were to take. It was always, always the right and just path that I followed. Walnut Creek has many challenges in front of us, as we have seen the past few years. Amongst others, we have financial challenges, COVID, public unrest, and of course, yes, as we heard tonight, the death of Miles Hall. As I wrap up, I want to be clear where I stand and where I truly believe a majority of Walnut Creek stands. There is no doubt our community will continue to experience financial headwinds. While there is no doubt that COVID has placed additional burdens on our city finances and the finances of everyone, including my families throughout our community, I hope that someone on the council will take the leadership position and advocate for prudent, long-term financial management. Doing so will allow future generations to look back upon you with appreciation. The Walnut Creek PD and the men and women who serve our community, those who put their lives on the line every day for the people that they don't even know and most likely have never met are true, true heroes. They have my full respect and my full support, and yes, that does include our wonderful acting chief, Jay Hill. While loud voices have sadly clouded the self-evident truth, it is clear to me that this is only a vocal minority of our community. I know, just like I believe a majority of Walnut Creek knows, that two things can be true at once. I know that Walnut Creek is a welcoming and loving community for all individuals, independent of your race, sexual orientation, nationality, or religion. And I also believe that we need to continually analyze our opportunities for improvement, including with our police mission. As our leadership has clearly demonstrated, I am confident that our city manager and our police chief can continue to guide and protect our community. The unrest that we as a country and a local community have experienced over the past few years has been eye-opening and concerning. As one of the only two council members who have attended every major protest in Walnut Creek, my eyes were open while listening to speakers who shared their stories. While I did not always agree with their statements and conclusions, I believe that it is only through more speech and more ideas that we as a community and country will come out the other side better off. It has been an absolute honor to serve each and every one of you. Thank you, and Godspeed.
Thank you, Justin. I have signed a proclamation that I will read at the end of any other comments that council members may or may not want to have. Does anybody want to speak in addition to that? Mayor Pro Tem, first.
Sure. No, I'll speak. And Justin, I do want to thank you for your involvement with the city. And frankly, I will miss some of the debates that we had at both in closed session and in open session. You bring a different perspective, and I've always appreciated hearing that perspective, even if we didn't always agree. And I trust that you will still remain involved in some way with the city, and certainly hope you do, and look forward to future conversations that you may have when you disagree with decisions that we've made or that I've made. So good luck, and I know that we'll be hearing from you a lot more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Francois.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And Justin, I want to thank you for welcoming me to the council when you were mayor two years ago. And I think you gave a shout out to my son, who was also wearing a bow tie that evening. He still fondly remembers that. And one piece of advice that you gave me that really stuck with me, and I think it would be a benefit to Cindy Darling as well, is when it got to be a complicated motion, you said, let's staff summarize it for you and then just say, so moved. And I appreciated that as a rookie council member. It served me well on some of those thornier motions that we had to make. So I just want to wish you well and thank you for your eight years of service to the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva. Justin, thank you very much for your work the last eight years on council. We have not always agreed, but I think that the times when we have agreed, it was almost a shock. In fact, we were both laughing sometimes. I appreciated your commitment to your principles, and I wish you well in the future. I hope you continue to be involved in the community. There are lots of ways to do that, so thank you.
All right. We have one elected official representative. May we bring him forward, please?
Yes, we'll be bringing in Matthew Wright.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Matthew.
Hi, good to see you all. For those of you who don't know, I'm Matthew Wright, Representative for Assemblymember Bauer Cahann. Wanted to come on and echo what Sam said earlier. Thank you to Councilmember Waddell for your eight years of service to the community here. We know that you'll continue to be involved through your various volunteer efforts and hope that you'll keep in touch if there's anything that we can do or partner on. We're happy to do so. We'll be sending you a certificate as well to thank you for your service. Want to also say thank you to outgoing Mayor Haskew for your service over the past year. Congratulations to those who were reelected in your new roles. We look forward to continuing to work with you. I hope you guys have a nice rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it's my turn, and here is your proclamation, Justin. Whereas Justin Waddell has been a resident of Walnut Creek for over 20 years, whereas Justin Waddell was first elected to the Walnut Creek City Council in November of 2012 and then reelected in November 2016, whereas during his tenure, Justin Waddell was selected as mayor by fellow council members for the calendar year 2018. Whereas during his eight years of service on the city council, Justin Waddell has attended over 200 city council meetings, whereas Justin Waddell has been actively served his community on various boards and committees over the years, including Housing and Community Development Committee, Public Safety Committee, Public Education Committee, and the Marin Clean Energy Board. Whereas his years of service have been marked by his dedication to protect the best interest of the community by acting with independence, looking for new ways to improve the city's financial systems with particular focus on applying unique standards to measure the consequences of current financial decisions on future financial stability, and passionately representing the unhoused and people with life challenges. And whereas the city council recognizes and appreciates Justin Waddell's years of public service and dedication to the city of Walnut Creek and its citizens for whom he has always held close to his heart, I now therefore, Luella Haskew, Mayor of the city of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the city council on this first day of December 2020, do hereby commend Justin Waddell and express appreciation for your distinguished service to the community and extend our best wishes for continued success in all your future endeavors. It was, we have served together for eight years, Justin, and there were times you said things that actually tickled my funny bone, and it took a couple of times for me to realize you actually did it on purpose. So you have a sense of humor, too. I appreciated that. So thank you for being part of our team. Okay. And now it's time for the new reelected and newly elected people to take their oath of office. And it looks like my name came up first.
If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Luella Haskew.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution.
And the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I will have a chance to give a little speech at the end of the transfer of mayorship to a new member of the council, so I'll reserve my comments till then. And next would be on the official list, Mayor Pro Tem Kevin Wilk.
I.
Hey, too. Hey, too.
I state your name.
I, Kevin Wilk.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cindy Darling.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say a couple of words. There's my family up there on the screen. Well, my husband's still missing, but he'll show up eventually. My daughter Rose and her boyfriend Will at the ranch, and then Grant and Natalie are up at Chico. I said Grant and Natalie. And I couldn't have done this without them. I just wanted to let you guys all know, the kids did so much work for me, and I really appreciate it. My husband Gary, who might show up at some point, is an engineer, and he does not like clutter, and he does not like chaos, and that does not work well with the campaign. So he managed to make it through the whole campaign without too much aggravation, the campaign material everywhere. And the thing that finally brought the candles back was the big four-by-eight signs in the garage, finding where they's like, okay, we're gonna go put the last sign up. I don't know where we're gonna put it. We're just gonna put it up somewhere. And so I really appreciate my family. I also wanted to say I appreciate everybody else that ran this season. It's a difficult thing to do to run for office, and I had a great team working with me and a tremendous number of volunteers. And I'm looking forward to working with the council and taking on the tough challenges that we have here in 2020. I actually want to put 2020 in the rearview mirror and move on to 2021, start moving back towards the light. Thank you all today. Thanks.
Really, Kevin wants to say something.
Been waiting for my family to make their appearance on screen. Obviously, they would be here if they could, along with everybody else for this evening. And I think that we're getting them on screen momentarily. Ah, there they are. So I first want to say that without the support of my wife Jill, I just couldn't be doing what I've been doing for the last four years. And so I really want to appreciate all support and also being my number one advisor and frequent advisor, I might add, on some of the trigger issues. In the background there is my son Shane, who's in college and back here for his last couple of weeks of his semester, and Darielle, who evidently is self-isolating with her mask on in her apartment. Ah, there she is. Also watching, I know, are my parents, Bob and Vanessa Wilk. And while they're not on Zoom, give a wave out to them. Thank you all. Love you, and I'll be having a bit more to say in a bit. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. All right. I'll wait until Kevin gets in his seat and Cindy gets in her official. Cindy D., we're gonna have to figure out the Cindy problem. At this moment, I've decided there's Cindy and Cindy D., but there will be another way to figure it out, I'm sure. So next on the agenda, still don't see Cindy. Is she coming? Did we find her?
She's coming.
Okay, there she is. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next on the agenda are comments from the mayor, and that would be I. So let's go. To paraphrase a Judith Viorst book title, "This has been Walnut Creek's terrible, horrible, no-good, very bad year. When I took my gavel last December 3rd, I looked forward to an incredibly lovely year. Remembering my first term as mayor, I coined the motto Walnut Creek Works. One year ago, I modified that with the recognition that what works best about Walnut Creek is in fact that people of our community work best when working together. With the optimism that only a pre-pandemic Luella Haskew could imagine, I embarked on my year as mayor with the theme Walnut Creek Works Together. Twelve unbelievable months later, I would argue that in fact, that is what we did and will continue to do. Thank you, our Walnut Creek community, for delivering on that promise. There are things and events that brought joy and deserve celebration. Trinity Center moved its home twice while St. Paul's Commons was being built. This incredibly supportive center is helping our unhoused people have a safe place to address their needs. St. Paul's Commons also has an affordable housing component that has translated into a new home for several of Trinity's clients. By working together, Walnut Creek's support helped make this program and building possible. We also supported the new Habitat for Humanities Affordable 42-Unit Townhouse Development on Las Putas Way with a groundbreaking celebration that is scheduled to happen soon. Finally, we've approved initial funding for yet another affordable, multi- Finally, we've approved initial funding for yet another affordable multifamily development at the corner of Civic and Ignacio Valley Boulevard. Walnut Creek is recognized as a state leader in supporting affordable housing, an accomplishment that speaks volumes for our community's dedication toward caring for one another. Working together also meant an emphasis on finding creative solutions for our challenges. The new Rodney Plaza in front of the Leisure Center for the Performing Arts is an example of a fantastic public-private partnership. It will be a real asset to not only the theater, but it will act as a gathering place for people to socialize while enjoying the ambiance of downtown. Who knew that having an outdoor performance space would be such a strategically wise move? Adjusting to the COVID-19 limitations, our community service day team put together an especially important drive to help the food insecure. Our citizens gave more than 38,500 pounds of non-perishable foods and 15,000 in cash donations. That translates to an equivalent of 33,000 meals to feed so many people in need. Quite an accomplishment we did together. While COVID-19 has dealt a serious blow to our city's economy, the city is taking advantage of the freedom that the council's emergency declaration to test new ideas to help our community's businesses survive by expediting the permitting process. The most tangible example of this has been the allowing for the speedy installation of the pop-up dining accommodations. The staff put in huge amounts of effort to find ways to react to what seemed like weekly or daily changing conditions, unique demands at each location, fire and other entity regulations that needed to be incorporated, and dealing with a lot of people, many of whom are under huge levels of stress. With the aid of Walnut Creek Downtown, we upped the focus on the arts with murals and tree decorating and even permitting downtown mini golf enterprise to draw people to our downtown. While these accommodations are necessary to deal with the current crisis, we are also learning to think more expansively about what our downtown can be in the future. Speaking of our staff, Walnut Creek's employees have risen to the challenges of working under COVID-19. All of the departments had to adapt to working at home or under the strict social distancing protocols. Arts and Rec went from full classes and services to practically nothing being allowed. That department has rebounded with movies at the top floor of the parking structure, an extraordinary way of virtual classes, including school enrichment programs, and a virtual visit of the Bedford Art Gallery. Public Works has continued to maintain our roads, our parks, and our open space. Our city engineers and inspectors work to keep in-progress and new development moving forward. The traffic team adapted to shifting levels of traffic depending on how strongly the shelter-in-place rules affected the use of our streets. Our police department was faced with incredibly difficult situations. Not every response was perfect from some of the public's point of view, but at all times, the safety and the security of Walnut Creek was and is and always will be their prime directive. These men and women serve our community with loyalty, concern, and dedication to constantly learning and improving with each new test placed before them. Our city's attorney staff has diligently supported our creative efforts while making sure that we follow the rules and regulations that govern our operations. Our city manager and his city manager's office team has been responsive and resourceful. HR, IT, and all the other administrative divisions have contributed their talents to keep the city services going. This has been a year of test for our staff. I celebrate their commitment to our community. And finally, a thank you to my fellow Zoom mates, our city council members. Conducting business, the people's business via videoconferencing, was often counterintuitive. We learned to how to unmute, not perfectly, how to use lights so that we don't look like we were in a back alley, and how to welcome in public comments in a most unusual way. When we get on the other side of these current COVID-19 mandates, some of the technology will stay, but I will welcome seeing our whole persons instead of just faces or avatars in our council chambers. Our whole world is looking forward to 2021. Walnut Creek has come through its own traumas of 2020. After this, we can then again focus our energies on rebuilding our economy, beating the results of COVID-19, and finding new ways to make our community even better. We will do it naturally, through our shared visions and our shared talents, once more with Walnut Creek working together. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I wasn't gonna cry. Thank you very much for this opportunity to serve on the council and as your mayor in the year 2020. And that's it. On to the selection.
I'm sure a few would like to say something before we just move on quickly. And as Mayor Pro Tem, I'll speak first. I just want to say, and again, thank you so much for your willingness to be front and center on this and for your year as mayor and your leadership over the last year as mayor. There were so many business areas that we had to take care of that were out of the public limelight that still needed to be done, have done. The city business continued to move forward, even though those might have not been the headlines in papers. And you were there at those meetings, the committee meetings. And let's face it, none of us took this responsibility figuring that we were going to be alone in our rooms for eight months while this was all handled. And it's not easy. There were none of the rewards that came this year with being mayor and all of the challenges. And I thank you and appreciate the work that you've done on that. And I hope that in one year, we can look back and say, look how far we came. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'd like to echo that. I think Kevin summarized it well with saying that you kind of, you took all the challenges and very few of the rewards that came along with being mayor. But I particularly appreciated your financial knowledge and acumen in closing those two budget, huge budget gaps that we had this year and last year. That was invaluable to me. And I also just want to say thank you for steering the ship during this very difficult year and doing it with humility and humor. I really appreciate that and I enjoyed serving with you on the HCD committee where we also had to. We got a little bit of the joy and the rewards from seeing some good projects and programs go forward. So thank you.
Just real quickly, I didn't get to serve with you, but I appreciated that you were always willing to take your time and help me understand what this job entailed and how much you needed to prepare for it and how difficult it can be and how rewarding it can be. And so I appreciate all the guidance and the friendship that you've offered through the years. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So I will close the remarks by starting out by saying thank you. Thank you for being willing to run in 2012 and putting yourself forward into an arena that is not very common for most people and really, really challenging. And thank you for bringing us your, as Matt Francois said, your financial acumen to the council, but also your understanding as a tax accountant of small business issues as well as large business issues, because those have been invaluable this past year, really to understand what our business community is suffering with. The other thing that has been so important, having you on the council, is your compassion for people, your ability to listen and carefully try to navigate through the competing priorities that we face at every meeting and day in and day out on the council. I am delighted to be able to call you my council colleague. I'm delighted, by the way, that we're no longer in the minority, Loella. We're the majority now. And but also, I am so pleased that I am able to call you a friend. And it was with that in mind, I again say thank you.
Wow, thank you very much. Y'all didn't get to see, and I'm not able to quite display it, but I have a giant basket of wine and food and a lovely, lovely gold ribbon. There we go, there's some food. I could turn it off to the Zoom. Let me show it, but.
We'll be on over to share.
Okay, fair enough. With masks on, then we'd be socially distancing. So thank you very much. Thank you for all those kind words. I really appreciate it. Now, can we move on to the next item of business? I see no negatives. So the next item on the agenda is the selection of mayor and, excuse, yes, as mayor. And it is my grand pleasure to report that this person, I got to know really well this year. We worked together on a lot of different things. And I know that he will put his whole heart and soul into the job. And it is my pleasure and honor to nominate Kevin Wilk as the next mayor of Walnut Creek.
It's my honor to second that motion.
Thank you. City Clerk, may I have the call of the roll?
Mayor Haskew?
Hi.
Councilmember Francois?
Hi.
Councilmember Darling?
Hi.
Councilmember Silva?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilk?
Hi.
Okay, and with that, I disappear as mayor and Kevin steps up to run the meeting.
Oh, thank you. And thank you again, and thank you to my fellow council members. So now it's time for the selection of Mayor Pro Tem. And if I can have a nomination for Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you very much, Mayor. It is my great pleasure and honor to nominate Matt Francois as Mayor Pro Tem. Matt, we've worked together for more than 14 years, first when you were on the Transportation Commission, then for the many years you served on the Planning Commission, and the last two years since you were elected to the city council. I truly appreciate what you bring to the city council and have brought to the city council over the last two years, particularly your skills and experience as a land use attorney, your skills and experience in Sacramento when you worked in the legislature, and also your longtime perspectives as a community member and as one of my neighbors. So it's my great pleasure to nominate Matt Francois.
And it would be my great pleasure to second that nomination. I think Matt will do a great job as Pro Tem.
Great, we have a nomination to second. City Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Silva?
Hi.
Councilmember Darling?
Hi.
Councilmember Francois?
Hi.
Councilmember Haskew?
Hi.
And Mayor Wilk?
Hi. All right, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. I look forward to working with you, Matt. So we only have one area left, and that's mayor's speech and a couple of comments. And I just want to say that as I sit here tonight, honored to have been re-elected to the city council to the city council by the voters of Walnut Creek and elected as mayor for the next year by the city council, I know we have a transformative year ahead of us. We've all experienced a year like no other in our history. We face simultaneous challenges to our health, our economy, and social justice values as a society. And yes, we must change as a result. All cities must change. As we celebrate the holidays this year, we're asked by our leaders at all levels to keep it small and close to home. And for most of us, this is the exact opposite of how we like to spend the holidays. But to move forward and to put COVID-19 behind us, we need to continue to take cautious measures that help ensure everyone's safety. To do this, we count on those closest to us to help make it easier. I'm so thankful for my family, who have been my biggest supporters throughout the four years on council and especially the last year. And I had just, of course, introduced them just a few minutes ago. But for the next year, we have some important priorities that will be addressed. We need to continue to work closely with local businesses to rebound from the financial impact of the COVID-19 pandemic while still meeting the requirements from county and state health guidelines. During the winter months, our local business community, particularly restaurants, need our cooperative assistance and patronage more than ever as we remain vigilant in wearing masks and social distancing while the vaccine makes its way to us. We're well underway with responses to issues raised by the recent social justice unrest. There have been diversity and anti-bias listening sessions conducted, and those will be leading into an anti-bias and diversity task force that I will head along with Mayor Pro Tem Matt Francois. This past year, the city has advocated for a 24/7 mental health care crisis response unit. The council has often spoken about our family members who have suffered from mental illness, including my late brother Brett Wilk. And we have all heartbreakingly been aware of the tragedy of Miles Hall's death during a mental illness breakdown. I am determined to have a 24/7 mental health crisis response unit in Walnut Creek with the county come to fruition in 2021 as one of my priorities. Due to the confluence of multiple crises this past year, one important priority stalled, and that's climate action. Walnut Creek has always been a leader in combating climate change. We will pick this up again now and address an updated climate action plan for 2030. We'll be discussing some specifics that we can handle locally as well as broader statements that our regional neighbors can use as templates for their own climate action plans. Now, there have been so many storylines unfolding over the past year as we have all had to manage through the pandemic and its impacts. But something that has stood out to me are the incredible stories of heroes in plain sight all around us. Maybe it's the nurse who lives next door to you, working extraordinary shifts but still caring for family at home. Or the grocery store clerk cheerfully ringing up purchases, trying to smile at you through a mask. Or your child's teacher, skillfully guiding 25 third graders through a lesson on Zoom. My sister-in-law actually has 25 kindergarteners and pre-kindergarteners on Zoom. I don't know how they do it. We have all had to make adjustments, and there are more to come. But it's important to take time to recognize those who are going above and beyond. And so in 2021, the city of Walnut Creek wants to hear your stories of heroes in your life. And we want to recognize them throughout the coming year. Visit our website at walnut-creek.org and find out how to nominate someone to be our local hero. We'll share some of your stories and every other month, highlight a Walnut Creek resident who has made a difference in our community. While it's important to focus on our challenges, it's just as important to pay attention to all the good things happening as well and the people who show what's special about those who live in Walnut Creek. And with my council colleagues, we will address our priorities while ensuring long-term fiscal stability, our health, our safety, and that includes public safety, and our unique quality of life for all of our residents. Together, we will work to help make an even better future for our diverse resident needs of Walnut Creek, one that our children and our grandchildren will be proud of and one in which there is a future sustainable planet as well. Let's bring 2021 on and wear a mask. Thank you. And with that, I believe we have come to the end of our meeting. And so I will, for the first time as mayor, adjourn this city council meeting, wishing everybody a healthy and happy next two weeks. Our next meeting will be on December 15th. Thank you.